Ready to start? When you are?
Kimberly just joined. And so did Phil. Kimberly and Phil are with us.
Okay, we're on the air, everybody, so they all know. Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting of April 22, 2021. Before we do anything, I have a right-to-know checklist to read off. As the Chair of the Gostown Planning Board, due to COVID-19 outbreak, in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order, number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are meeting electronically. The Planning Board is utilizing a telephone conference line for this electronic meeting. The public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following telephone number: (603) 766-5646, and using the participant code 785645, followed by the pound sign. The town previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using the available telephone number with the posted agenda. If anybody has a problem with telephone access, please call (603) 488-6783. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at a later date. Please note that all votes taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call vote, and we will begin the meeting with a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. My name is Tim Redmond. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board, and I am alone in the room. I will let Gail call out the names to do the roll call. Gail, would you please do that?
Sure. Kimberly Pease?
Hi, I'm here, and I am alone in the room.
Karen Hughes?
I am here, and I am alone in the room unless you count the dog. But I don't think counting dogs.
David Pierce? David? Is he gone? He was here.
He looks frozen. He's muted, but he looks frozen.
Okay, welcome back to him. Carlos Adams?
Yes, present, and no one is with me in the room this evening.
Thank you. Jim Raymond?
I'm here.
And are you alone?
Most of the time.
Okay. Barbara Griffin?
Barbara is going to be a few minutes late.
Okay. Joanne?
I'm here, and I'm alone.
Sarah?
Sarah, we're the Town Engineer. I am here and not alone. I have Caroline, Duke, and Connor. But they'll be quiet.
Okay, and is Phil here yet? Phil Devanza?
Yeah, I've been here.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. And I am Gail Abrek, Recording Secretary and Alternate, and I am alone.
Thank you very much, Gail, for doing that, and thank you.
You're welcome.
So at this time, we have one member who is not in attendance. So to start the meeting off, until Barbara arrives, we'll have Dave Pierce as a voting member, if David can acknowledge that he's here. I did not hear him acknowledge. Well, until we get him on the line, Gail, then you'll be the voting member in case he has problems with his connection.
Okay.
All right. We are going to have a slightly adjusted agenda this evening. It came out a little later, and we were going to start with a new business application here, map 18 lot 17 and 16A, a completeness review and site plan review and conditional use permit for the site. And could, Joanne, could you please run the application for the members and the public?
Sure. This application is for an addition of a laundromat and an existing car wash, and also some modifications to the car wash itself. I have included the staff report from the staff members, including myself, and I am recommending that the application is not complete because this application requires a conditional use permit. And although they did submit a letter stating that they acknowledged that they had to do a conditional use permit, they did not submit the criteria, the answers to the criteria for the board to vote on, which is part of the application. So the application itself was not complete. They have requested, they have submitted a letter from Eric Mitchell's office, and they have requested that this be continued to May 27.
Have we accepted this prior to this meeting, or is this the first time we've heard this?
No, this is the first time. It was continued once before. It never, it never came before the board. The applicant had requested a continuation, which was granted.
How long, when was that, Joanne?
That was just about a month and a half ago. So the applicant has not been before the board with a presentation.
So your recommendation is find that it's incomplete?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a staff recommendation that map 18 lot 17 and 16A is incomplete. I'd like to get any comments from any board members that may like to make a comment on this, on Joanne's or discussion on Joanne's report.
Mr. Chair, this is, this is Dave Pierce.
Okay, Dave.
My internet connection failed just as you were doing the roll call, and I have now rejoined the meeting. What's my status as a member?
You are a voting member until we hear from Barbara Griffin, who is not present at this time.
And thank you. I am alone.
Thank you, David. So does any board member have any comment or discussion on Joanne's recommendation?
I do. Tim?
Jim Raymond, please.
They've asked for a continuance, that this not be brought forward. Why are we finding it's not complete? Why don't we just let them carry it over? We find it's not complete. They're, they're out.
My recommendation that was mailed to you went out last week, and the request for the continuation just came in, it was either today or yesterday. So, you know, it came in after the fact. So that's, that's why there's the confusion. I also have a meeting set up with them for next week, so if that makes a difference. I believe Eric Mitchell lost one of his surveyors, and that's why things are not moving as quickly as we would all like to see.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Karen.
So how long have they requested for a continuance?
They would like to be continued to May 27.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Tim, what was the reason for the continuance? You may have said it, and I didn't hear it.
They didn't give a reason. They just said that they would like to have more time to work through the comments. But I mentioned that I had heard that Eric Mitchell lost one of his surveyors.
Okay. But Joanne, did you not say that this application was incomplete?
It is incomplete. However, they've, they've since asked for a continuation, so if you want to continue it, you can do so. If you would like to find it incomplete, that's up to the board.
And what are the, what are the ramifications of both of them, so everybody understands what's going on? If it was found incomplete, what does that mean, Joanne, exactly?
So if it was found incomplete, it basically has to start over again with a new application and an updated plan. If it's continued to May 27, everything remains the same as far as the notification. People would not be re notified. This would be the re-notification, basically. And it would give them a month to address the comments that were outlined in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this, on this matter, before we move to do something?
This is Kimberly. I have a question. If we, is there a way to continue it, but then also request that they re-notify the abutters? Because we do have a lot of comments on it.
If you'd like to do that, you can do that as well.
Tim?
Yes, Jim, go ahead.
To the point that Kimberly just raised, that is the sentence incomplete, which means refile and repay the fees.
Just, just for a point of order, Dave, I had recognized Jim Raymond, so we're going to listen to Jim Raymond.
Well, I appreciate that comment. I was going to make a motion to not ask for this, but to continue it, subject to the, to whatever that date was, subject to the requirement that the applicant re-notify the abutters. And we take no further action on it tonight.
I second that.
So it was a motion to grant the request for a continuance with the stipulation that they are required to re-notice by all the abutters made by Jim?
And, and if I could just add, the continuation was May 27.
Okay, continue to May 27. Does that, could you amend your motion, Jim?
Yeah, I left it a blank to be, for, for to fill in anyway, if I couldn't remember the date.
Okay, so the motion to continue to a date certain of May the 27th, it was made by Jim and seconded by, was that you, Kimberly, that seconded it?
Yes, it was. And I guess, maybe for the public who might be listening, because we received so many comments, Joanne, those comments will remain on record. That's correct, right? Just to assure the abutters that they won't have to submit that information again?
Correct. We have everyone's comments, and we will, if the board would keep their packet until that date, we will certainly move forward with those comments in hand.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, if there's, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. We'll start with David Pierce.
Yes.
Kimberly Pease?
Yes.
Karen Hughes?
Yes.
Phil Devanza?
Yes.
Carlos Adams?
Yes.
Jim Raymond?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So the motion is passed. Grant the continuance. And from now on, I'll just use your first names only. It's getting kind of come with some use all her names. All right, so with that, that application is moving into the May 27, 2021 meeting.
Tim, we have a request for another continuation, if you'd like to get that one out of the way.
Yeah, we can do that in case somebody's on the phone here to listen, so we'll move on to that one. I was just going by your agenda, and was that the next one? No.
It was the one before this one, map 12 lot 10.
Well, I'm looking at the Chair's agenda. Am I looking at the right agenda?
I'm looking at the regular agenda.
It's old business. Map 12 lot 10.
I'm going to follow the agenda, and we'll get to that later, then.
Okay.
All right, the next, we have some correspondence and action items. The first item is the acceptance and/or correction of the minutes of April 8, 2021.
I have two edits. I believe they have been sent to Gail.
Yeah, I got them.
Okay. Sorry, just for everyone to hear, on page two, there was an extra "said" that I asked to be removed. And then on page eight, the sentence repeated itself. So the sentence should read, Kimberly Pease, close the public hearing, period.
Okay, do we have any other corrections? All right, seeing none, we'll, we'll call for roll call vote on the minutes of
We need a motion. We need a motion, Tim, and a second.
I make a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to approve that it has been amended.
I'll second.
So the motion's been made by Dave and seconded by Kimberly. All right, for the roll call vote, start with David Pierce. Dave?
Approved, yes.
Kim? Kimberly?
Yes. Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Carlos?
Abstained, Mr. Chair. Was not present at the meeting.
Jim?
Approved, yes.
And the Chair votes yes. The minutes are approved as amended. We have a volunteer application for the Capital Improvement Committee Member-at-Large. Joanne, could you please tell us about that?
Yes, we received a request from a Daniel O'Connell. He would like to join the CIP committee. He wrote in his experience that he's been a resident of the town for close to 10 years. I'm sorry, he's been a resident of the town, and for close to 10 years, he has property management as a corporate accountant. So he's interested in participating and would like to serve.
Does anybody have any discussion on this volunteer application?
This would be for a member-at-large.
So it's a member-at-large. Any discussion on this?
I have, I have some questions. Members-at-large, there's three that are allowed, I believe. I am one. Is Kimberly one? She, because she was appointed to the CIP a couple of meetings ago. And
I thought Kimberly was just a planning board member on there.
Oh. I thought that's what Jim was as the chairman.
You can have one, planning board member.
I believe the minutes say she's at large.
Oh, okay. And then we have Brad Parkhurst.
So at this point, we do not have an opening for Mr. O'Connell to be the So, Joanne, it sounds like we already have a full slate of community-at-large members.
Okay, I'll, I will check the, the rules for CIP just to make sure that Kimberly can't switch over to a planning board representative.
Maybe heard on that, before you do that, we, this board has established in the past that only one planning board member can vote. So if you change it to a planning board member, you've changed it to a non-voting member, which is a disincentive for any other planning board members to be on the CIP committee. I don't like that, but I got outvoted last time I tried to change it. And unless Kimberly wants to be non-voting, I don't think she should disagree to change her status.
Okay. I didn't realize that.
Well, we had that discussion last year. And I got booed down by it. I tend to go ahead and recover, obviously.
You mean, you wanted to have the planning, another planning board member if they would like to?
Yeah, I don't want to get, I don't want to get distracted. This is a planning board committee. We should be able to put more than one planning board member on it as voting members. It's our committee.
Right, I agree with that.
But for some reason we have in the rules, you can't, and people didn't want to change that, so, oh, well. But I, I mean, we leave Kimberly at large in that case.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, we're, we're still having a discussion here before you make your motion. Hang on for a second. So if, if Kimberly was to join CIP as, as a Jim's stead to serve as Chair in the event that Jim was not there, could she also serve as a member if she chose not to be a voting member?
May I answer that?
Please.
Sure, but why would anybody want to do that and become a non-voting member? The whole idea of being on a committee is to be able to influence it and express your views. And I don't intend, I don't intend to miss meetings. I may, but I don't think they can expect to have a big role in this. And Jim, Kim was my alternate in the last year. How many meetings have you had to attend, Tim?
None.
None. So, you know, it's, it's not a good, not a good place to bury somebody if they want to be an active participant. So I think we either amend our rules, which we can do, we made them, or we keep Kimberly as the member-at-large.
So why don't we have, have an agenda item for our next meeting, for Joanne to look into things, get, come up with the answers, and if we can, want to make a motion, Jim, to amend our rules, you can make a motion at the next meeting, and then we can let Mr. O'Connell know our decision at the next meeting. If that's agreeable.
Doesn't CIP start before your next meeting? Here is the agenda. I just found it. Oh, it doesn't start until June. Okay.
Yeah.
You have plenty of time. Okay.
So if that's agreeable to everyone, we'll move it forward in that direction.
Agreeable.
Okay. So David, did you want to make a motion of sorts?
No, I, I was prepared to suggest a motion that we would accept the applicant pending the Planning Department verification that a third is open. Remember, it would technically leave it to be resolved.
Okay.
And once, and once it's resolved, then our motion would carry. But if you want to table it, go ahead.
We can make a motion at a later time after it's all determined, because if it, if it's determined that we are not going to be able to let that gentleman serve, then the motion be a moot point. So let's wait until we have an answer. Okay, the next item on, on the correspondence and action items is a letter from Adam Vermakowicz. Joanne, could you please let us know what's going on?
Yes. Gail somehow popped out of the meeting, and now she wants me to let her back in, but I don't see that she actually, I don't see her name trying to get in. So can, just give me one second here. Oh, she's there as a guest. Okay, all right. So Adam Vermakowicz owns, I think it's called Green Thumb Landscaping, which was approved by the Planning Board, and has been going, it was under construction over the last few months, and he's ready to open shortly, probably by next week. He had asked about having the sale of ice cream in his shop. And I told him I didn't see an issue with that, because he wasn't having a sign that said "ice cream for sale." He wasn't having seating. There was, you know, there was no place to actually go and sit down and enjoy your ice cream. It was strictly for, basically for the customers that were already in there. And he went to the Sewer Commission, because that was basically the the biggest deal about having the grease trap and things like that. So he went and met with the staff of Sewer, and then he went to the Sewer Commission, and they told him to just have it handled through staff. So he wrote a letter just to make sure that he was okay. He hasn't added it yet, and he doesn't plan on doing it next week. But he also has a letter or a memo from T.F. Moran showing the traffic counts and how an ice cream, sale of ice cream would not cause any issues with his traffic. And that letter was submitted by Robert Duval, who is a traffic engineer. Also attached to that little packet is the approval for his landscaping business, and it was basically approved for to convert a single-family home into a landscaping nursery with retail shop. So he's here, I, I don't know if he's on the phone or not, but he's here asking, does he need to come back to the Planning Board for further approval, or is he all set?
Okay, thank you, Joanne. So board members will open this up for discussion?
Tim, this is Carlos. I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
So, so are they required to do a traffic impact study for the landscape business?
They, they had done that already during the site plan review.
Okay, so they did perform one.
Correct.
So I, I guess I'm confused, because it seems to me that there's a, there's an added use here that just by nature would tell me that it's going to generate more trips. I mean, you may say there, it's only for customers. I mean, you may say there, it's only for customers of their landscaping business, but I gotta believe that once, once word gets out on the street there's a place where you can go to buy ice cream, another place in town, it's going to generate some trips.
Joanne, didn't they attach a T.F. Moran update in regards to the trips?
Yes, I'll read you what the, the, um, the gist of it here is. The Garden Center will have an average of 18 trips during the PM peak, which is four to six, and 51 trips on the Saturday peak. During the morning peak, the ice cream window will be closed. This is intended, this is the intended population to be served by ice cream. For reference, the ITE handbook does not provide a generation rate for an ice cream or yogurt shop. The ITE uses, generates 13 trips during the weekday PM, which represents a normal operating business with typical signage and seating. As an accessory or amenity use, the expected trip generation would be lower than 13, and this trip demand would be satisfied by the existing Garden Center trips.
But how can you piggyback to Garden Center trips on the ice cream trips? They're independent from each other.
Right, but take that into consideration. The, the conclusion was that based on the foregoing considerations, the accessory nature, which is the ice cream, would be minimal added to the, um, the expected trips for the, for the Garden Center. So it's not, it's, it's not expected to generate anything that would be, you know, out of the ordinary. It's just an accessory to, it's not like going there for an ice cream shop and sitting down and having ice cream. It's just something extra that he's selling that typically goes along with, with, uh, you know, Garden Centers and things. There's lots of places out there that have a little ice cream stand along with the Garden Center, but it's, but it's accessory to the main use.
Okay, other board members?
Yeah, have you heard?
Jim?
Well, don't confuse zoning with planning. It may be permitted by zoning as an accessory use, but that doesn't mean it's not subject to our review and jurisdiction, and Collis hit on the points. Is it a change in the approved site plan? Because it's an additional use. If you look at what was approved before, yeah, this wasn't in the nature of what was described, and we have reviewed in the past the additions of ice cream windows. That doesn't mean we want to prove it. And that doesn't mean we may not find it's a non-material change. But we have a plan now that shows certain things that we approved after a hearing. This is not in it. I don't think it's a matter that can be just approved administratively and not brought before this board. And the question is, what, what are we going to do with it?
So, so I'm trying to find out does, what the board wants to do. Does the board want them to come in with a waiver for the site plan? Do you want them to come in with an amended site plan? Because I don't want him to just come in and then he's told, well, that's the wrong thing.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't parking be a consideration as well, Joanne?
The parking, like I said, he's not planning to advertise this as an ice cream stand. So the parking, um, you know, he, he would address as part of whatever review he does with you. But I'm just trying to find out what, how much information are you looking for?
Tim, I have a comment.
Wait, so I heard Phil Devanza. Phil?
Yeah, um, it says, uh, that there's not going to be a sign on ice cream. Now, the only other question though that I have is the A-frame signs that are permitted uses, would, would they be, would, would they be allowed by our, our, our sign zone, uh, our zoning for the sign to, to use that? A-frame signs, put it out when the ice cream stand was open?
Any type of signage that he would, if he were to use signage, any type of signage he would need to get a sign permit for. So I was told by Adam that he does not plan to use any signage for the ice cream stand. I can only go by what he said.
I understand, but that's not my, my understanding with the A-frame signs, the portable A-frame signs that you collapse, you can put them outside, that they're allowed.
Well, there's still...
You don't need a permit for them or anything.
No, you do need one. You need a permit.
I don't believe so, Joanne. I believe those A-frame signs are allowed to be put out as long as they are, meet this minimum square footage requirement.
But you still need a permit for it.
Okay, well, we can find out the answer to that. I thought I heard Karen in there. Did Karen want to speak?
I think it was Kimberly.
I'm sorry, Kimberly, I apologize.
That's okay. Uh, I, I have a hard time saying anything about this without a plan in front of me. I, I just feel like we need a plan because I remember this being very tight in terms of traffic movement and actual parking. And I disagree with the general idea that people would just be grabbing an ice cream cone while they were shopping at the Garden Center. That may be, but people in this town love ice cream, and we've seen Deverians be really, really busy, and you might just hop on down the road a little farther and pull in and get your ice cream someplace else, so that I, I don't agree with the idea that people aren't going to pull in here and park and get ice cream, and then if there aren't tables, maybe just sit in their car. So, um, without having a plan in front of me to really look at that and remember, and I don't remember anything anymore. So I don't, I, I feel like, Joanne, we need a plan, and maybe we decide that there's a, I don't know, a change in that plan, but I do feel like we need, I, I need that information to help me make any decision on this.
Yeah, I, I have one other comment.
Phil?
As do I, Tim.
And as a follow-up to Kimberly's point, depending, you know, without a site plan, without seeing where it is, you could put a window that's visible from the road. You won't need a sign outside. And you just put an informational sign right above it for your patrons that says "ice cream."
Okay, Phil, Collis Adams?
Yeah, Tim, again, I, I think this is all about an additional use, as I said originally. You know, you can say that, you know, we're not going to sell ice cream during the peak hours. You can say that, um, you know, anything you want about signs. The point is, it's an additional use just by word of mouth. You're going to generate additional traffic here. It is an extremely small site. It's very tight. Uh, there's a lot of traffic in that general area with Henry Bridge Road and Irving Station and everything else that's going on there. It really needs to be part of a site plan so that we can look at it in that context and, and ask questions based upon that. I, I think that's really important.
I have a question.
On who's that?
Barbara.
Barbara?
If this was ice cream being sold entirely within the building, would they need to come back? In other words, no drive-through window?
I don't think proposing a drive-through window. I think it's proposing a walk-up window.
Well, a window, an outside window. But if it wasn't a walk-up window and it was all just being sold next to the cash register and the counter inside, would they need to come back?
Be very careful with that one.
Okay, um, any other members have anything to add? I'd like to ask if, Joanne, is the, Mr. Vermakowicz on the phone line waiting to speak?
I don't know, um...
Yes, I am.
You are there.
Okay.
Okay, members, we're going to let Mr. Vermakowicz speak. Go ahead, Mr. Vermakowicz.
Hi, guys. Thank you for having me at the meeting tonight. What we are looking to do is with the existing building and no changes, there are two windows on the back of the building on the patio that is all in the, the original plan. That is where we are looking to sell win, uh, sell ice cream cones from. Thing else is, is all existing to the building. There are no changes being made.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll, we'll put that in the record.
So, Tim, can I, can I get clarification on that? So they would be driving up to the window to get ice cream?
No.
It's on the patio, Collis, so they'd be walking up according to what Mr. Vermakowicz has stated.
The parking isn't next to the building on the plan.
Would you like me to put the plan up on the screen?
I don't think that's the appropriate thing to do at this point because nobody's had a chance to even think about this or look at this. This is, I think that this probably should be decided by the membership tonight about what we're going to do and schedule for the next meeting or next available meeting as, as an action item.
I, I move that we continue this to the next meeting, and the applicant can decide consultation.
I'll second that, Tim.
But, you know, whether to have a waiver or a presentation, I, I think we can give some feedback that if there's not a material change, you know, we, we entertain waivers, but I, we don't have enough information right now. No, it's not a waiver. It's rather, it's funny, it's a non-material change. It doesn't require a full amendment.
Can you hear me, Tim? Tim, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I just lost my power. I wanted to make sure you could still hear me.
Okay, Collis, you are, you're, you're vocal. You're dark, but you're vocal.
So can I...
One quick question?
Yes, Mr. Vermakowicz, go ahead.
Um, I heard a question earlier about if we do not do a window and it's only sold inside, is there a difference in that?
Well, that, that's a question, as members, we don't, we can't answer that. It'd be up to, to staff to advise the membership on what the ordinance or what the, what it is. I don't have that answer, sir.
Thank you.
Joanne, do you have an answer for that, or is that something that needs to be looked into?
Well, because you approved this as a, as a... Everybody's talking there. Because you approved this, wait, let me go back to that page. Hold on one second. This was approved for a landscape nursery with retail shop. I don't believe that you, I mean, at least that, that I have ever seen, that you've limited what people are selling inside of their retail store. So if they're selling something inside the store, typically someone doesn't have to come back for special permission for that.
Well, Joanne, that's a really loaded statement because you could, you could tell people you're going to sell anything inside the store. I think it was listed as a, a Garden Center with retail stock and garden supply items, as I remember the applicant stating. And I think that it was fairly clear that it was meant to be a Garden Center. The fact that, that the request for the ice cream sales has come up, unless it's a clear-cut line and saying that we don't have any, any authority over what people sell in their store, I think it should be, it should be continued as made a motion by Jim and Collis, and we should have a further discussion on this. I know it's going to delay his decision to get going on it, but it's what the motion was, so I think we should let the, the group decide on the motion.
I'm, I'm looking for some sort of clarification because the motion was, basically it just said to come back to the board and, and maybe it would be a non-material change, or maybe it would need an amendment. So my understanding for this is that he would apply for an amended site plan, and the abutters would be notified, and we would, you know, have a normal hearing, and then the board could make the decision as whether or not this was a non-material change, or they would approve it as an amended site plan. Is that how you want to handle it?
We don't have to have a notice of abutters to have an, um, to have a non-material change. It's just the board makes the decision for a non-material change. It doesn't require a re-notification, does it?
No, but if you're looking to do an amended site plan, it would. That's why I'm just trying to figure out what should, when he comes back, should he just come back for asking the board to find that this has a non-material change and show his plan and show where the traffic and the parking and all of that would occur?
It sounds like the least expensive option for the applicant to, to get a decision made rather than have to go through the whole notification process and, and modified site plan process. Because Jim's motion, Jim's motion was to continue it or discussion as it was a non-material change. That's what Jim's motion was.
I, I, for purposes of discussion, um, if the applicant were to say it was solely interior, no, no outside window and no signage, would we, can we find that it's not a material change and it isn't have to come back? And Barbara was suggesting that.
Well, if, if that's what the applicant would like to do, he should state that now.
This is Dave. I, I would support that. If the food product is, is not a, a primary activity, there's no dining area within the facility, it's a, it's an incidental product that's being sold under their umbrella called retail, then I would support moving, giving approval on this issue.
So, but for anybody else, any other member want to speak before I ask Mr. Vermakowicz to speak?
Uh, Tim, I'd like, I have a question, and it, it sounds like a silly question, but is there a difference between scooping ice cream inside a, a retail store versus sell it, you know, having a cooler with frozen ice, like ice cream sandwiches or whatever it may be? Like, I, I don't know if that makes a difference.
Well, yes, the, the issue comes with cleaning the utensils. And so it's a build, it's a building issue that they have a grease trap, and it's also a sewer department issue because it's potentially an increased flow of surge. But I don't see the Planning Board consideration here as being involved. It's an incidental sale of a retail product.
So, any other members before I ask Mr. Vermakowicz to come back on the line here with us? So, Mr. Vermakowicz, one member has suggested that, uh, it could be considered if it was strictly an interior type of operation without a window, if you're willing to make any statements that would help us make a decision for your case. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, I would be perfectly fine with it being just interior, um, as I do have it potentially set up to be inside as well. I would have no problem not using windows and making it interior.
Thank you for that. So the, the applicant has made a statement to the effect, the effect that he used to do it on the interior only, so. But we already had a motion, we had a motion that was made and seconded. Do you want to rescind that motion?
I'd rescind my motion so that we can vote on the other, the second, whoever seconded it would have agreed.
Yeah, I'll rescind the second. This is Collis.
Okay, I would make a motion that we find that the applicant requests you sell ice cream on the interior of his store only with no signage, um, so it's, it really is an accessory to the current retail use is a non-material change. It does not require an amendment to the site plan. And if the applicant requires to have an exterior window or expand in any other way by seating or otherwise, you can come back, or he has to come back to this board.
And Tim, this is Collis. I'm agreeable to that as well, so I'll second that motion as well.
Okay, the motion's been made by Jim and seconded by Collis to find there's a non-material change to sell ice cream inside the building only with no window and no exterior seating. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
And signage.
And signage. Thank you, Phil. Any discussion on the motion?
Can I just say one thing? Could you make that no outdoor signage because he can certainly have a sign inside saying "ice cream sold"?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see and ten, because we, we, we regulate outside, but not, if that's so.
Okay, we're going to have a roll call vote on the motion. We'll start with Kimberly.
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Collis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Barbara?
No.
No, okay. And the chair, Tim, the chair votes yes.
I'll just say that I voted no because I don't think it's anything we should have just taken a vote on, given that the applicant is essentially represented. It's occurring within the four walls and no additional advertising or traffic. I don't, I think it's a dangerous road to go down to start approving what product is being sold. Thank you.
Okay. So the next correspondence and action item is a copy of a building permit and ZBA knows a decision for Tanya Goslin on Class 6 Road. Joanne?
Yes, so this is just to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen as to whether they should approve this addition. We do have a memo from Nancy Larson, the zoning code enforcement officer. And she explained how this did go to the, the ZBA meeting. And it's, it's now, they, they went for a variance to add a deck, a sunroom with a dormer that did not meet the side property lines. And so now they actually need a recommendation from the planning board to the select board so that Tanya Goslin can obtain a building permit because she is on the Class 6 Road. Tanya Goslin is with us tonight in case there are any questions that cannot be answered from this memo from Nancy. I've got some pictures where you can see where the addition and the deck is. Nancy did, this was the one that came in and Phil thought there were some issues from long ago and she did do a thorough review of the older files and could not find any known violations of the zoning. There might be an issue with the wetlands, but that's, has nothing to do with this board. So they're just basically looking for your recommendation on whether this can get a building permit or not.
Okay, open it up to discussion for board members. Okay, we don't have anybody speaking, so the, it says the select board requests a recommendation for issuing a building permit on a Class 6 Road. Is that something that we have? We're going to comment on or not comment on?
Hi, this is Kimberly. So Joanne, I just have a question. The first sentence of the memo that we have says, this memo was prepared in response to the planning board's request. Made during initial review of the building permit application, the board requested confirmation there are no outstanding issues, violations with this property. And then the last page said that we're not sure about the DES wetland permit.
Nancy has been in contact with the DES this week. And they were not able to determine if there was a violation based on the photos that Nancy had sent over. So until they can send someone out there to, to the site to do an inspection, they're not sure whether or not that needs a permit. But that would be an after the fact permit since it's already been built. Their request for the planning board is simply, can they build on a Class 6 Road and put these additions on that they had planned to do?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I think under the statute, we are entitled to comment on this. Select board to make a determination. And we've been, I think we've been ignored in the past, so our, our recommendations were not very prescriptive. But I think we, I would propose or make a motion that we, to the board is in general, we do not encourage expansions of uses on Class 6 roads because of the, the planning and other concerns they raise. And in this case, if the applicant has in fact built the deck without seeking approval, that select board should take that into consideration, not in a favorable way, because we don't want that to be a practice of Gostha.
I agree. I second.
That was Kimberly?
Yes.
Okay, the motion's made by Jim, seconded by Kimberly. Any discussion on the motion?
Can I just back up a minute before you vote?
Go ahead.
So I understand that, that Tim, sorry, Jim had made the motion not to expand. And that's basically what they're asking for now. They're asking to construct a 12 by 24 deck and a 12 by 12 sunroom. And they went to the zoning board of adjustment and a variance was granted. So I just wanted to be clear that this has nothing to do with the other issue, just so everyone's clear on that. This is, this is a new project that they've come in to do.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Joanne, I don't, I guess I don't really understand the timeline of this because reading this memo, it says that there's a deck that has been constructed without the benefit of a building permit. And the potential deck is in question as to whether or not it needs a DES wetland permit, as I read this memo.
And that's, that's a violation issue which Nancy's looking into, but has nothing to do with the building permit for the new.
I think it has everything to do with that. Why would we recommend something to the select board to approve building when they're not obeying the current rules that they should be?
I don't mean that. I just mean that it's two separate, it's, it's one property and you can look at it as a whole, but the violation portion of it is not before this board. It's before Nancy and the DES, just so that's clear. This board has nothing to do with that particular violation.
Well, so then it's our, this is Barbara. So then is our position that we will not make a recommendation on this pending the resolution of whether there's a current outstanding violation in regards to prior unpermitted building that may have created a wetlands violation?
That was not the motion, Barbara. The motion was do not encourage, that the planning board does not encourage expansions on Class 6 roads. That's what I jotted down.
I understand that, but I think Kimberly's bringing up another point is that there's an unresolved violation issue in regards to something that's already occurred. So why would we be recommending anything further?
And I think that was what Jim, was also part of Jim's motion.
Okay.
That was the second part of my motion, so.
Yes, thank you.
I missed some of it, sorry. All right, well, there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion on Jim's motion? We all know what the motion is. Is anybody unclear on what the motion is?
Can anybody hear me?
Go ahead.
This is Tanya.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tanya. I didn't know you wanted to speak. Go ahead.
Yes. My house is not in wetland to begin with. And neither is the L in the back that I want to put the deck on is not in wetland. Well, I don't know where that's coming in the picture. Otherwise, it would have been built on wetland, which is not.
Who made that determination?
That's the thing. It has not been determined yet.
Right.
But we're not, we're not, we're not discussing the merits of or not about the wetlands possible issues. We're discussing a motion, a request in the Board of Selectmen for a recommendation. And at this point, the recommendation is that we do not encourage expansions on Class 6 roads with the other, second part of the motion included, so.
But there was an existing deck here prior to this. Are you aware of that?
No, I was not aware of it.
Yeah.
Was it a permitted deck?
That doesn't seem to be clear to me when I read this memo. I'm not actually sure that's correct. And I don't want to get into an argument about, with the property owner, because I also think that maybe this is a procedural matter that we need to be discussing without the input of the applicant.
Okay.
Do you want to table this until we can get clarification on this memo?
It doesn't, the Board of Selectmen's going to make the decision on this ultimately. It's not, we have no decision. We're asked for a recommendation. And a recommendation will seem pretty clear that we don't encourage expansions on Class 6 roads. I mean, that's a cut and dried statement. So what the Board of Selectmen does with it after the variance was granted is, it's in the Board of Selectmen's hands at this point.
But the second part of it, Jim, is also to the extent there's a violation that, you know, the board should, select board should take that into consideration. If it turns out there is none, then that additional part of the motion has no impact. But I think it is something a board, or the select board should weigh. It is, I'd like to look, unlike what Joanne said, at the totality of the property in weighing expansions of uses on Class 6 roads. That's its role. What it does with that is up to the select, we're just making a comment. We're not approving or disapproving. So I think we should move the motion and be done with it.
I agree.
Okay, I'm going to have a roll call vote on the motion. Kimberly?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Colas?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
And Tim, the chair votes yes. So we will send a, we will send a, this statement to the Board of Selectmen and they'll, they'll deal with it. Thank you, Tanya, for attending.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have two requests from Eric Mitchell Associates to continue two applications, one of which we've already discussed. So Joanne, could you talk about the second application it was requested in a continuance for?
Yes, the second application is map 12 lot 10, and that was for the four lot subdivision on Montalona Road. They had been found complete back in March and they are requesting a continuance to May 27th.
And we have to have them extend the 65 day clock as well?
They did agree to do that in their letter.
Okay. What do you, do you have any recommendations on this request?
No, I, I see no reason to, to continue it. I mean, I see no reason not to continue it.
Okay, that's, that's better. I like that one there. Okay. Does any member, open it up for discussion on the board members. All right, no discussion. Do we have a, we have a motion?
This is Kimberly. I make a motion that we continue to, for map 12 lot 10. Is that correct? That's a wonder continuing.
Map 12 lot 10.
Thank you. Do we have a date? Our date uncertain.
5/27.
Okay, to 5/27. Thank you.
So Kimberly's made the motion to continue. Does anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second it, Tim.
Thank you, Karen. All right, any discussion on the motion? Seeing, roll call vote. Kimberly?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Colas?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
10 votes yes. So it gets, it gets continued to May 27th. Okay, that concludes the correspondence action items. The next item on the agenda is an open space committee presentation by David Nieman, a presentation of the conservation easement on map 7 and lot 91A. Do you have anything to add on this, Joanne, or should we just hear from David at this point?
No, we can hear from David.
David, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Well, your floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you for having me. So David Nieman, I'm in the room alone here to represent the Conservation Commission on an active project that we're working on. We've been to the select board and requested them to begin the hearing process on whether or not to accept an executory interest on the conservation easement. And so then they have sent out requests to, to planning to get your recommendations on this. The project is to establish a conservation easement held by the Piscataquag Land Conservancy on lot 791A, which is owned by Kenneth and Gail Burns. This is on just south of Snook Road. It immediately abuts 213 acres of conservation land that projects we've previously done, the Fullerton Mahoney Easement with PLC and the Showst Easement with the Forest Society. This is one of our target areas for protection, largely because of the wetland resources that are contained within this, these properties and to the south of these properties. It's a, it's a large and integrated complex of wetlands and streams that basically all run together and eventually go to Gorham Brook. The, there's two images in the handout that you received, two maps. One is just to show the location of the property off Snook Road and its location next to the Fullerton and the Showst easements. The second image, which has a lot of colors and keys and looks very confusing, but it's just basically a map of all the different types of wetland resources in the area. It's an image that I took from a grant application that we submitted to the DES to get an aquatic resource mitigation grant. DES recognized the value of this and they did in fact award us the grant and awarded it to PLC. And basically the, the DES grant will pay for 50% of the cost to secure this project. And that's, that's it in a nutshell. I'm trying to be brief because it was emphasized to me the importance of being brief with a busy agenda. Be happy to answer any questions.
Just for people who don't know about all the acronyms, could you please describe where the matching funds are coming from? I know what it stands for. Could you just say it for the record, please, David?
Yep, the, the grant source is from the New Hampshire Department Environmental Services. They have the, what's called the Aquatic Resource Mitigation Fund, which is a fund established by the state for when other wetlands are impacted or destroyed in other projects. Money is put into this fund to be used as mitigation for other areas within the jurisdictional region that the fund applies to, in this case Merrimack Valley. And so that's what ARM stands for. Other acronyms you might see in here are the CC LUCT Conservation Fund. So we have established a fund for conservation projects. The Conservation Commission has established it, which receives the tax revenue from the land use change tax.
That's the one I was targeting, David, so people know what it stood for.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's fine.
So yeah, basically DES is paying for approximately half of it and the other half is coming of required matching funds from the state is coming from our conservation fund.
Okay, thank you, David. Any questions for David from the members of the board?
This is Kimberly. I, David, I just want to congratulate you on all of your hard work. That's a great win for the town that we received a $73,000 grant from New Hampshire DES for land conservation in our town. And that's exciting news. Good job. And thank you for all of the hard work of the Conservation Committee and volunteers for, for doing that and obtaining that grant. So that, this is good news and I think it's exciting to see this.
So Kimberly, while you're there, would you like to make a motion for the recommendation?
I will make a motion that we recommend this be forwarded to the select board. Are we recommending something specific?
No, that's perfect.
Perfect.
Anybody want a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Karen.
Mr. Chair, I think we amend that to make it stronger. We, we comment on and we may recommend that. So we, we recommend that the select board accept the, but it's really, are we accepting a gift or a purchase? Because
This is a purchase.
I, it's coming from the conservation funds. They can just do it, but tell them yes, we, we recommend it.
So there's been a motion made to, and seconded for the recommendation to the select board. Roll call vote. Kim, Kimberly?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Colas?
Yes, absolutely.
Jim?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Tim's yes. Vote. Okay, so that passes. And thank you, David, for your presentation.
Well, thank you for having me.
Okay, we're gonna go on to old business now. Map 12, or this is the one that was continued, never mind. So new business is map 19 lot 33 and 34. Joanne, could you please give us a run on that, please?
So this is an application for a lot line adjustment down in Moose Club Park. It's on the corner of Moose Club and Shore Drive. The plan is complete, and staff recommends it does not have regional impact. There is, there are no new lots being created. The purpose for this lot line adjustment is to give one lot a little bit more land in order to be able to build a house. The lot that is, is going larger is actually still nonconforming, and they did receive a variance from the zoning board of adjustment to allow for that. They are, they have no waivers, and there's a few comments from staff in the report, but not, not many.
Did it, Joanne?
Yes, and both lots are served by municipal water and sewer.
Okay. Board members, anything, any questions for Joanne before we get started with this? Can you hear anybody talking? So I guess we'll have the applicant's representative get on with us now.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Matt Peterson with Keach Norsham Associates. I'm gonna share my screen here.
Hey, welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Hopefully you guys can see the aerial photo in front of you tonight. The lots that we're looking at are right here on the corner of Shore Drive and Moose Club Park. The existing house is located right here at this location. The two parcels that were brought up, the existing lot is map 1933. Whoops, sorry. This is actually the, go back to the existing conditions. The existing lot is map 19 lot 33. It's 12,021 square feet, located again with frontage on both Moose Club Park and Shore Drive. The other lot that was a lot of record is map 19 lot 34. It's 4,100 square feet. One of the things that we had found out during the process of this, when the clients had originally bought it and why we went to the zoning board, is your tax maps show that the lot actually came out into Shore Drive and had pavement on the corner of that there. Once we did the survey, that is not the case. The boundary was actually smaller than what was shown on the tax maps there, and I think most, most board members would agree with me that that happens many times throughout, throughout the state. So once we had found out that this is 4,100 square feet, what we looked to do, as Joanne said, is we went to the zoning board on March 2 to allow an adjustment between these two lots. What we requested to do was to move this exact, this existing lot line approximately 21 feet over to this location here. It allowed us a conforming lot of 10,000 square feet with the existing house on it. There was also an old kind of shed in two locations, and I also noticed that in the DBW comment, you'll notice that this fence that goes around, comes back up, is in the right of way here. It then comes down through our property, and it's in the right of way again on the south side of the property. Just to give you a view, looking around the property, this is the existing house on our property that our clients, my client is looking to refurbish and then put back on the market. The lot that we're looking to develop is right in here. These are the two sheds that were currently out there before we purchased the property. They've been removed a couple months ago. This is directly across the street from us. This is the landing or the beach landing, which in this picture here, right here, just to give you a view of around the property. Again, looking back on the property from the two sheds, looking up the road from Shore Drive, and this is the back of the house that we're remaining. And then the last couple ones are the views from the abutters across the street out toward the lake that we have. What we'd like to propose is a approximately 1,400 square foot house. It would sit.
You know, Matt, can I interrupt you for a second, Matt?
Yep.
Joanne, I, I neglected to do something that I always try to do, is to make sure this, make a motion for the completeness and accept and begin this process. So Jim, could you please help me out and make a motion?
I move that we find the application's complete and has no regional impacts or accepted for hearing.
I'll second. This is Kimberly.
And we fall into whole, the space-time continuum to pretend we did that before Matt started to speak.
Yes, and we'll have it properly recorded in a minute. Okay, roll call vote on the motion. Kimberly?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Collis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
My vote, the chair votes yes. Sorry for that oversight. All right, Matt, you please continue. I apologize for interrupting you.
No problem. So with the lot line adjustment, the zoning board, what it allowed us to do was to locate a home on this property that was, fits in with the character of the neighborhood that's there. As I said, about 1,400 square feet is what the final product came out to be. We are at the zoning board with about 1,500 square feet. The building looks similar to what we had just kind of thrown together there that I'd said on the, so this side of the facade here would face Moose Club Road. This one here would be Shore Drive. Obviously, we have this, the shoreline and that type of stuff in this location here. The first floor, pretty, pretty simple, again, kitchen, living room, that. Up on the top, we incorporated the deck into the second floor, basically, so we wouldn't be adding height to the building to basically keep it into character with the homes that are in the area. So again, the front look of the property, looking over at it, no deck is up on top of the house here. But when you come to the back of the house here, there will be a deck on the second floor that would obviously overlook the lake and have some nice views from there. Again, a pretty simple, modest home. We were trying to find something that fit into, you know, the area, and that's the application. As Joanne said, we have sewer and water and everything else that's on site there. So I really open up for questions or comments from the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions or comments from board members? It's an unusually quiet meeting.
I'll take it.
Jim, I have a question. This, I think this, this, did this go before ZBA?
Yes.
And were there any conditions in ZBA's approval that we need to be mindful of?
Joanne, I, I don't have it at the top of my head. I don't think so.
No, there, there were two variances granted, and they did not include conditions. There are a few people on the phone. I don't know whether they're here to comment or they're just listening or?
Well, I'll open up the public hearing if no other board member has any questions or comments at this time. So hearing done, I'll open the public hearing.
Joanne, remind the public, if they wish to make a comment, they have to hit star nine.
Yes, but these people have called in through the Teams application.
Thank you.
They are actually on here. I think they can just go ahead and speak.
Who's running the phones?
I am, but there's no one on the phones. It's, people are on the phone through Teams. Like Phil, he can just go ahead and speak. Is there anyone there that would like to comment? No, I guess not. Sounds like someone's saying something.
Well, it doesn't sound like anyone's there, so.
Well, I think if you call into these meetings, usually the host has got to do something to unmute people. I'm not sure on Teams how they raise their hand.
Thank you for that.
Well, Phil is on there through his telephone, and he's just goes ahead and speaks. No one does anything. I'm not sure.
Looking at the participant list, and there are a bunch of people that are muted, but I don't know if that's intentional or not.
Well, we'll give it another 30 seconds for them to unmute if they're listening.
I know that one of my client on this there, so he just texted me. They're, they're good.
Okay, and the other one is Phil, and the other one is the town hall.
We don't have to wait any longer. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Any other additional questions or comments from board members?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the application of the conditions noted in the staff report, of which there appear to be 12. But the, the, I think we have to restate that the, some of these asked, it should state it, like number 12, it should state that the unlabeled lines and et cetera are corrected. It's an affirmative statement of what's expected from the applicant.
Okay. So there's a motion to approve with condition 12 being corrected to say that these lines need to be corrected. Any other, anybody want to second that?
I'll second it. This is Kimberly.
Thank you, Kimberly. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on the motion. Kimberly?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Collis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
10 votes yes, passes. You're all set there, Matt.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night. Good seeing everybody again.
All right, we have one other. I am on our new business, map 6 lot 1. It's the Sports Dome. Joanne?
Yes, so if you remember, the Sports Dome was approved, and they are in the process of finalizing their documents, and they would like to ask for a six-month extension of their conditional approval. Nick Golin is with us from TF Moran for any questions. I did have an opportunity to go over and take a tour of the Huxit site that is officially open, and it was really quite a sight to see. It's very nice.
Joanne, you mentioned that they're requesting the six months for their condition approval. Has there been, have, are all the conditions been met? Or was, what was the conditional, why do we have a conditional approval versus an approval?
Well, most times we always have a conditional approval, and so they're working on meeting just a few more of the, of the conditions so that we can go ahead and get the plans signed. Nicholas could get into the specifics of that if you'd like to hear from him.
Hey, guys.
We've had one year from the approval. How come the conditions aren't taken care of? What is, what is the delay?
I'd be happy to answer that for you, Mr. Chairman. Nick Golin, principal with TF Moran. Relative to the conditions of approval, if you recall, this was approved essentially as COVID hit us. So this was the beginning of March. Unfortunately, a few things slipped between the cracks, one of which was coordination between the attorney for the project and one of our abutters for the signature on one of our easements. It's my understanding at this point, those attorneys are talking, and we expect to have that easement resolved in short order. But that is the only item, to my understanding, that is outstanding. So not to blame COVID for this, but that is the reality. This kind of slipped, slipped between the cracks.
You can blame lawyers, Nick. It's okay.
Well, I know I may have a few on the line here, so I gotta be careful.
Well, thanks for owning it, Nick.
Nick, that was the easement that was being relocated, correct?
Correct. So the easement itself has been signed off on, and I believe recorded. There's just a final signature as far as how they're transferring some other items in relationship to it. Excuse me.
Okay. Thank you, Nick, for explaining the conditional approval. Any board members have any discussion on the matter? I guess they want this meeting over early.
Do we have to open this to public comment?
For next time extension, Jim? I don't know. Be honest with you.
I think we have in the past.
It's listed as public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Thank you, Jim. And I don't hear anybody, Joanne. We have no, nobody on the line?
Nobody's on the line.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we grant the extension request.
Second.
So the motion by Jim to grant the extension, seconded by Phil. Thank you, Phil, for chiming in. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, the roll call vote. Kimberly?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Collis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Tim votes yes.
We need to add a caveat that Nick was clearly not talking about any lawyers on the board when he made his comments.
I would second that caveat.
So, so, can I do that? No, thank you very much for your time tonight, everyone. Thank you.
Okay. Joanne, do we have any business that I have neglected to bring up?
No, we have completed the agenda, and our next meeting is May 13.
Mr. Chair, I have a request or a comment, if I may.
Please.
Patty is forwarding us by email materials that seem to be submitted by an abut to a certain project who requests they be passed on to us. Number one, I don't have time to read emails. Two, I don't think that's appropriate. Joanne should be a filter on what gets submitted to the board. A packet is put together so we know what to read for a hearing. These aren't materials, they're not in the record. They haven't been submitted in the record. They just, somebody is requesting that they be sent to us. I don't think that's appropriate, and I'm deleting them, frankly. And I, I'm gonna request that, that those go through Joanne. If they're supposed to be in the packet, they be put in the packet. Otherwise, they be submitted at the hearing, just as any other parties get to present their comments.
Tim, I agree with Jim. I think it's an unreasonable burden to place on our, on our staff.
Well, that's an unreasonable burden for everyone, because I went through and read them all, and it took me about 20 minutes to read them all.
Yep, I agree.
This is Barbara. If I can say something?
Please, Barbara.
I guess, I'm not sure who the burden is on or who it's supposed to be on. Fortunately, I don't think forwarding emails is very burdensome for staff, and I think printing them out and putting them in the packet and copying them and sending them to everybody is actually much more burdensome. We can all choose to read the emails or not. And I think And I think we've had this discussion before. Some board members read emails, some board members don't. I just would hate to, as a board, I, we either have a policy that all public comment on anything before this board is to go directly to staff or as elected officials, we get contacted by members of the public. I don't understand why this board would be any different and I don't understand why, as a membership, we individually decide to do what we do with our information.
If I may be heard, the issue is what's considered in the record that we.
Well, that's a different issue.
Well, and that's the problem. It's sent to us by staff as if it's in the record, when in fact, it's not. You're right. Anybody can contact us with any information, but if it's coming from our staff as if it's, we're supposed to read it because in the record, that's, that's a higher level. Because we are obligated to read what's in the record. But I can't read stuff that comes the day of the meeting in an email. I'm sorry. I'm not going to.
I guess the bigger question, given the issues that are contained in the more recent emails is I suspect some of it is in a record, but not in a planning board record. Joanne, you might want to have a conversation with Derek on it if the chair would allow me to say so because there were some issues raised that are not related to planning issues that I think we ended up with.
Patty did check with Derek because some of those emails were actually addressed to Derek. And I, I had said to her today, the ones that came in late, and I said to her, she said, do you want me to send them? And I said, well, it's directed to Derek, not to us. So why don't you ask him? And he told her to send them. Probably because he didn't want to be accused of holding something back. But I agree with Jim. We got saturated this week with not only those emails, but telephone calls and confused neighbors and as to what was happening. It took up so much of our time this week for that one application. So I don't know, unless you want us to just collect the emails here and if anyone's interested, we could put them in a file for you to take a look at or something, but I don't want to clog up people's email boxes with repetitive information. Because.
This is Kimberly. I, sorry, Tim, can I go ahead? Okay. I guess I have a question about how something gets into the public record for a project. So for example, if we were to have heard this project tonight, would we have, for example, said we've received three emails from Mr. So-and-so or Mrs. So-and-so? And would we have to read them? Or could we say the board was copied on all this information and we've already reviewed it and processed it? Is that, is that our process?
Yes, that's, especially if something is long like that. If it's just two sentences, it could be read into the record, but that was, those were long. I don't think.
The assumption is as long as we are provided that information, it's part of the record, but it's also assumed that it's our duty to read it. In which case, I agree with Jim. You know, we got emails today that I didn't have time to read. I, I couldn't have read them. I was working. So that it is challenging.
And all of that information is put in the records here. If someone were interested in reading it, we do have copies here for them.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this topic or do we have a resolution, what we're doing with it? Or is it just comment time?
So it sounds, go ahead, Jim. It's your.
If it's material that's going into the record, it should be gathered by Joanne and be sent to us. But just to randomly pass stuff on, we don't know what it's, why it is, what, what's its significance. I don't, I don't have time to that and I'm deleting them frankly because there's no indication of why, what they're. Yeah, I know it's an unhappy abutter, but that doesn't mean we have to read it or it's part of the record that we should be reading. So I'm not, and I will not until Joanne tells us this is part of the record for the meeting. It should be reviewed.
Just to make clarification, that that person is not an abutter. So everyone.
Still, yeah, we have our time and certain obligations, but that's not it.
We're getting close to the line right now. Barbara, did you want to speak? I saw your.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
So do you want me in the future to collect, go through it, kind of read out the duplication and then send it with a cover email explaining what it is and then we'll put it in our files here?
My suggestion is you may do that, but you're not compelled to send something to us because somebody asked you to send it to us. Typically, material is presented in the packet for the meeting and not just randomly.
Okay.
We budget time for this and it's not all the time.
And if, if something comes in after the packet is mailed, we'll, we'll just hold it.
Yeah, I've got the staff's discretion, but we just get these random emails. Cost them. Can't do that.
And I have a question for, for legal minds on the board. Does, does sending this type of information to our email, personal email accounts open us up to right-to-know requests to read our emails by someone who wants?
I think if you ask me, since I deal, we represent towns or certain lawyer in Manchester, we've seen before, we'll ask in discovery requests for personal emails and that's exactly why. So I just wanted to, we don't want to do this. Just like we're supposed to send emails back and forth to among each other because then it does certainly become public record.
I just took a class in the right-to-know and they did mention, Tim, that those personal emails would be subject to review.
Well, then I think it's in all of our interest to not get any emails from the town on our personal accounts. If we don't want to be subject to right-to-know requests.
Well, I think it comes, if, Mr. Chairman, this is Barbara, it comes to the issue that many organizations are grappling with as we were curled into completely electronic events as to whether or not all elected members should be getting email accounts from the town.
Because I think that might be an option because I, I believe other boards or at least maybe the chairman do have emails. Tim, do you have a town account?
I do. We, at the sewer commission, because we, we discuss, we have money and different things going on with the sewer commission. We asked to have an email account that would be solely within the town's control. And yes, the sewer commissioners have email addresses with the town of Gostown.
And Collis has one as a select board member. So it's probably doable. I'd have to check with Derek what's involved with it, but.
Tim, you're just concerned with them, with, with people potentially having our private email addresses. I mean, correct?
No, I'm, I'm wondering if someone, let's say an email was distributed in a person's name by way of our staff office. Now, if that person wanted to find out if, if all the planning board members got the email as requested, could they have a right-to-know request to look at yours, mine, and everyone's private email accounts and look at all the emails that we have in there that are totally unrelated to the town business?
I would say no to that.
Tim, it goes beyond that. If in discovery, they would ask the question, you received an email, how did you respond to it? And that's where they would, you would have to offer information.
As someone who's been on the other side of this, I will tell you, you just get a subpoena for your email records and then you're dealing with a motion to quash. So that's what happens.
Yeah, but that's different, but it's a subpoena as opposed to a right-to-know request.
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
I, I'm not as concerned about that, but it is an issue. I'm more concerned with being barraged with stuff that I don't tend to read. Let's just deal with one issue at a time.
Yeah, the 91A request would be more of like, did, you know, what emails are sent and what emails are responded to, but.
I was having a traumatic flashback there.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I introduce another related comment on this issue also?
Go ahead, David.
If, if an abutter or a person who wishes to speak at public comment for, in our board, if they're unable to be present for the public comment, I always thought in the past, the proper way is that they would submit a request, be it email or in writing, to the appropriate department with the caveat starting, you know, I am unable to attend the public hearing. I request that my comments that follow be presented during the public comment. Would that be a more proper way that Joanne would handle these comments?
It sounds like a reasonable approach because I know that's how we've done it in the past, David.
Thank you.
All right. Any more discussion on this matter or are we moving on?
Motion to adjourn.
Not yet, Phil. I have one question for our selectman representative. Have, have, have you had any, been able to have any discussions regarding possibly going back to either hybrid meetings or full in-person meetings, Collis?
Yeah, it's going to be brought up at the next meeting.
Thank you very much for that.
Yep.
Okay, Phil has made a motion to adjourn. Any second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Karen.
Despite, you know, enjoying looking at all your lovely faces.
Why, thank you.
Well, that's so nice of you. All right, motion to adjourn. Kimberly?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
Collis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Tim says yes. And I thank everyone for their patience, me running a Zoom meeting. This is all new to me.
You did great.
Yeah, you did great.
Good job.
You did great, Tim.
Other than for getting to a cover one step, Jim.